Okay, thank you. Mr. Lamie, are you satisfied this matter probably before council?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, then the overview by the planner.
All right, so just to give a brief overview of what's being considered tonight and then, of course, if we have to answer any questions through discussion or later in the meeting. But so what the proposal is tonight is to rezone properties along Sherbrooke Lake, of course, on the municipality of Chester side of the line. The zone is proposed to extend 300 meters inland from the ordinary high watermark. Just to quickly summarize what the zone does, so for clarification, the lakeside zone, which is what we're proposed to rezone to here, already exists in the planning strategy. We adopted that over the last year and it's been worked on over the last number of years. And so what that entails is within the lakeside zone, in terms of new development, is limited to one to two dwelling units per lot. There is a minimum lot size of one acre for newly created lots. There are some farm animal regulations, so farm animals are permitted, but there are regulations around fencing of the buildings that house them. Another clarification that's come up is around forestry. So forestry is a provincially regulated activity, so we do not regulate that. We do, however, regulate forestry processing. So structures or buildings like a mill that was associated with forestry, we would have permitting and setback requirements for. Another key feature of the lakeside zone is there is a requirement to maintain a 10-meter vegetated buffer that begins at the ordinary high watermark, extends 10 meters, about 33 feet inland. Within the buffer, you're permitted to build docks and one accessory structure. If we consider the buffer as 10 meters deep by however much fronted you have along the lake and you take that total area that's buffer, it's permitted to clear up to 30% of that total area. And the intent there is to allow for pathways access to the lake, including a boat launch, that kind of thing. There's also an exemption in there that would allow the removal of dangerous or diseased trees under any circumstances. So we certainly are not intending to have people maintain vegetation that poses a threat either to themselves, their property, or surrounding vegetation through some sort of a spruce beetle or that kind of thing. Another clarification that's come up quite often is, well, what if the lot is already cleared before the zone is applied? And basically, the way that I like to describe that is this almost puts a freeze on the clearing. So any areas that are already cleared can be maintained, can continue to be cleared. If that's lawn, you're permitted to continue to cut that lawn. If that's just you cut down the little alders that grow up, you're permitted to continue to clear that area. What you can do is go further. Well, I'd go further beyond. So if you're already beyond 30% of that area, you can maintain what you've got, but no further. And that is all subject to the non-conforming provisions of the which we talked about during the plan review. And basically, that allows something that was legally existing prior to a change to maintain and continue, but not expand further. So that's how that would work. The lakeside zone, basically, it prohibits large commercial developments. So the only form of commercial development that's permitted is what we classify as home-based businesses. So it's things like professional services, home offices, a craft workshop, that type of thing, but not generally things that generate a lot of traffic or noise. Basically, something that fits in with the home without without causing conflict with neighbors. Additionally, recreational vehicles are permitted but are regulated in the zone. So RVs do require a development permit if they're going to be stayed in for more than 14 days. So there's a sort of a temporary usage that allows you to stay in an RV for up to 14 days per year with no permit requirements. If you plan to have it there for the summer or for more than two weeks, then we would ask that you obtain a development permit. The purpose for that is to basically make sure, A, that it's out of the vegetated buffer and B, that it otherwise is treated like a dwelling unit. So it would have some yard setbacks. And finally, one minor change that we are making to the lakeside zone along with the application of the zone to Sherbrooke Lake is to include the Sherbrooke Lake United Church Camp as a permitted use in the zone. And again, the intent there is to allow that use that's longstanding and well-loved in the community to continue unimpeded by the zone. This, basically, they would be allowed to continue their operations and expand without any restrictions here. So that's sort of the synopsis of the zone. As I said, it's proposed to extend 300 meters inland and there is a map in the package that shows all of those properties. To just give, I guess, a bit of a synopsis on the process that got us here, we followed the normal process that we do for rezoning or a land use by law amendment. So we held a series of meetings, actually began back in December of 2020 when there was a request from Wildore Park to council to consider rezoning their lands to something else. And that was, that discussion eventually led to the creation of the lakeside zone and now we're coming full circle to offer that back as a rezoning. We did more recently have a public information meeting on the rezoning. That was held March 29th at the Forest Community Center. The report was then considered at the municipal planning advisory committee meeting on June 15th and council gave first reading and set the date for tonight's public hearing on June 30th. We also followed our normal advertising procedure. So then we had notice of the public information meeting and the progress bulletin. We also had the planning advisor committee meeting first and then three notices of tonight's hearing ran in the paper. We also, again, standard practice here, sent a letter of notification to the District of Luenenberg and municipality of Kings as there would be a bad act neighbors. We did have some staff-to-staff discussions with the District of Luenenberg, but they did not end up submitting anything formally for council's consideration. As well, and this is a, again, standard practice, we sent a notification package to 216 properties. So that's each property that is proposed to be rezoned and all properties that are within 30 meters of one of the properties to be rezoned. And that, again, is our standard way of notifying people. So those packages went out on July 4th and primarily gave information for tonight's hearing that did give us the option to the zone information. And also posted signs, George Brown Road, Church Camp Road, Narrows Road and Oak Tree Road in an effort to try to reach residents. Typically, our practice calls for posting notice on each property, which would have been impractical in this case to put 216 signs up. So what we tried to do was get people at the entry points to the copies of all of the progress bulletin ads were put up on the website, municipal social media and the municipal offices. So I think that did my piece.
Yeah, overview. Okay, thank you. Any questions at this point? There is no developer, so there was no presentation by a developer this evening. So we're on the comments from the public. I don't have any list of people who wish to speak, but is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for this issue?
Yes. Hello, this is Bill Goleby. I'm Mike Morrison. I'm chairman of the Wildore Park Cottage Association. So I was, our group are the ones that initiated this request and I'm absolutely delighted with the support we've got from the municipality in terms of our effort to provide the kind of zone designation that is appropriate for a closed cottage community. And in terms of the strategy and the revision to that, it's there now. And here we are at the next stage, which is to put it down to the next level and put it into the bylaws. And I think a lot of people have provided comments and those have been ablely addressed by the staff here. And what I am hoping is that we'll make a decision tonight that'll put this thing into reality at the bylaw level as soon as possible. And I think that's all I want to say, other than thanks for all the support that has been provided to address the issues that were raised and not only addressing them, but putting practical elements into what exists now in the bylaws. And I think they serve the purpose for everything.
Thank you very much for comments. Anyone else wish to speak yet?
Good. My name is Ron Ron. And I received a letter from the council, first time I've placed on. I had information given me now and then, but never really knew any of the needs. And now I turn here tonight, I am opposed to lay song. I don't know why this changed our basic song to a lake song. I understand that Sherbrooke Lake, this is the first time that we're trying to put this through. We are now looking at being the guinea pigs to move forward. It first come because there was something that could be all in Somers Park and they decided, well, we can't let that happen. We gotta make a change. So I decided to make a change. But to make the change for a water be. This thought is not true. It's no exception. People buying property, they buy land, wealth and enjoy. Now to come on a set of rules, try to change this nice policy we have on the regular phone with no changes. And I understand that people that would like to make a change in their development, they have an association, which they could also make a resolution on your special bylaws and make changes into their area without affecting other people around the lake. And I'm also opposed because this is Chester looking at only the Chester municipality. So you give a set of rules for one half of the lake, you have no rules for the other side of the lake. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it should go through. And I only officially received one letter about this whole thing. And that is to show up to this meeting and nothing beforehand. So why is it put so late? And I see such few people here trying to pass something, become a new song, a lake song, and using us as the guinea pigs moving forward. I'm against it and I associate with these people. I live in a meeting, but I know where.
Thank you very much.
I missed the name, Mr. Ward.
Thanks, thank you for comments. Yes?
Can I also say I agree with the fellow behind me because
Your name and certificate.
My name is Dean Sampson and the property is 228 Narrows Road. And this is the first time that I've ever been sent a letter to say that you were even looking at this development. And I agree with this gentleman behind here to say that, why? Why all of a sudden are we, because there's an issue with one area, why is it affecting everybody else around the lake? And again, not including the other side of the lake, which are clear-cutting properties for big development houses. But yet, you're not involved with it at all. And why no other lake in the area such as Suffering Lake, lakes all the way through? Why are they not being involved, just part of this? So I too agree with this gentleman that we should have been given more notice. Most of us live in the city. We all have jobs. Can't always come to a meeting one night during the week. And we should have been given because from my area, there's half a dozen of us here, but where are all the other people? You know, this is such a small representation for that whole area.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to make one statement, reference people knowing about information on the meetings associated with this. I went out of my way every time there was a meeting to let the residents of Deep Cove and the residents of Sherbrooke Forest know when the meetings were and what was going on.
I just comment to that. We never received, no, one bit of information on our road. No one person received any information regarding meetings. So you had in contact Narrows Road, Beaver Bank or Beaver
No, no, I didn't. I did not. No, I did not.
The meeting included everybody. It's not just about you.
Well, okay, that's a wonderful note, but you wanted to speak.
Hi, Robin McCann, 280 Ridge Road. I'm also currently in the high paying job of president of the Sherbrooke Forest Homewards Association and represent these folks here. This, as Mike has mentioned, this has been a great process that the council has undertaken. It's nice to see how zoning changes are not taken lightly. That there's lots of study. We had the, you know, two planning advisory committee meetings, as was referenced, public meetings. This is probably the eighth meeting about this topic that I personally attended trying to stay with the program. So there's been a lot of consideration given to this. I certainly credit the thought that the planning staff and council have put into this. There was some significant problem solving to try and balance interests as people thought about, how do we protect the lake? What are the tools available to us to protect the lake? And the natural buffer is, of course, one of those things in the toolkit. And also how to protect everybody's property values that are here. A key part of this is something that is significant and important protection for the folks that have cottage properties. There's been, you know, questions about restrictions and what I can see, what I can do with my U plane. And everybody likes to have sort of control their destiny, control their property and that's sort of natural. And I think we have to recognize there is a trade-off that the restriction is to, that you can take small vegetation, the vegetation over, I think it's 13 centimeters on the portion of the lot that's in the other 70%, do whatever you want, 30%, but in the other 70%, try and leave the bigger stuff. That's a pretty good balance to allow you to see the lake and allow some significant root systems there that will help absorb the water before it gets to the lake. It's quite an impressive, significant piece of work by staff and council to balance interests here. And it's a challenge when this municipality only controls one half of the lake, so to speak. But frankly, I don't get the logic of how not being able to do the whole lake is an excuse for not taking action. My presumption is that this municipality is in position of providing leadership. I think Luenenberg is watching. They'll make their own, they'll make their own decision. But I don't think two wrongs make a right here. I think there's an opportunity for this municipality to respond to the request that was made of it. Our homeowners association voted unanimously to move it in this direction. So very, very strong support from any folks that have commented. And this this council is doing the democratic thing, just responding to a request. Question about where the other people, I think if the other people had concerns, they may also be here, dare I say, that tends to be what happens in these kinds of situations. So I'm with Mr. Morrison. This has been a very well-managed process, time-consuming process, reflecting the care and consideration that council gives to these things. And I'd like to see it pass and our properties have appropriate protection and the lake has a little more protection.
Anyone who hasn't spoken yet, wish to speak?
No? Okay. So my name's Ken Trance, 228 Narrows Road. And I'm just a little nervous speaking publicly, but I also agree with Sampson and McDonald's here. I'm not in favor, but we've owned the property for 21 years. And we take care of our property. And I just don't like that because allowing to, at that part of the lake, set it up for themselves, but don't force it upon other people. And I hope we do not go into a vote tonight because, again, people can't make the meeting on a weeknight. And it's hard to, like, it's cottage country. Yes, if you take a look around, a lot of people are in in, have the advantage of being retired. And other people aren't working. So I mean, forcing this tonight for a vote, I think we can go back and share this with our neighbors and discuss it and give them clarification if we don't go ahead and vote next, but I'm, I know.
Anyone else that wish to speak to the issue? Yes?
I'm just gonna create a question here. He did say in correspondence, but then I was happy to receive correspondence. But when I pass it up to the realm constituents, they just don't understand it and don't know what was all about. And they say they're not interested in it. So when I get emails and I receive it, I get this kind of message, then I know these people are not interested. And that's why there's no response back from us, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else before I close off the public session? Certificate?
Well, actually, I don't have certificate, it's on the lake.
Well, wherever it's lit, it just
I'll give you a 16054, but on the forestry land, so I don't actually have a head up on the lake. I would like to say that I'm more pleased with some of the changes that we're making because I worked very hard with, you know, I mean, I know most of all these folks in the room here that from the cottage said, you know, they go down through the strip of our land every time they go to the lake. Right, so and it very, very deep concerns about the retentions that you wanted to have with the, you know, 13-centimeter trees not being cut. Because one thing that I've learned, and I've learned a lot more in the last six or eight months to do with climate change adoptions and climate change effects. And we really need to be proactive for that. But also, too, we need to have something, I think, built into here where we can, I know you said about disease tree stuff, but we do need to have it built in here because, you know, this past winter, we had a really severe storm that went through our area. And there was an awful lot of damage to hardwood trees in particular. And a lot of them had to be cut down regardless if they were healthy or not. And so I think we need to have some kind of plan in place. An interesting enough, tonight, that I got six or eight letters in the mail yesterday about this love of lakes and a survey they're doing, it's coming through Canadian Wildlife Federation and Wetlands Association or something, and the survey and both of them will be going up and down the lake assessing. So the waterfront, they're not the problem, they're going to digitize stuff. People, I guess they don't understand, people don't understand digitized forestry. I've worked hard the last, you know, 10, 15 years, but I've learned it. I'm still a long ways from being any kind of a serious knowledgeable person. So I think, you know, it's way, but I would like to see something put in place similar to what we have with the water quality situation, where there's some kind of an initial survey done by people who are knowledgeable, and I could give you a list if you want, but to do a survey of the vegetated buffers. And you don't have to do mine because I don't follow in the regulations for the vegetated buffer because I follow on the forestry, right? So I follow, and I only carry its own regulations. But just to see what it is like now and then see what happens because information coming out around climate change that, you know, trying to plant like natural breeds and different things like this that have deep roots to sort of hold the land and to hold the water and control water flow. And I'm not saying you got to put it all on your line size. I don't mean that, but I think that, you know, you're taking a big step here zoning a lake. But I really want to caution that, you know, we need to be, you know, if we're going to do this, we need to be thinking ahead. And in forestry, we always have to think ahead because what we do today doesn't benefit us instead of the next generation. And like I said at London, we, our family have been down on the lake for 100 years. So I think I know a little bit about what I'm talking about when it comes to that. So I would really like to see, I'm not, I don't really care for the fact that you want to zone the whole side of the lake rather than zone what the cottage owners asked for. Because they asked for something in the council or the staff. I don't offense anyone, but it decided that you should do the whole side of the lake instead of addressing their particular concern. And I have a concern about that around the whole, you know, we're just, our strategic plan bylaws of the municipality, having been quite involved in that whole process for back when the new owners were selling. I have quite concerned that I'm not seriously concerned for myself because I can conduct my four, three kids, usual, and, you know, guys don't be offended, but I can go down, I'll be pretty spotted like, so if you see him coming down, like, don't panic because I'm allowed to do it with it, as long as I do it within my regulations. I just wanted to say that because I think you take a step, but you don't think about the consequences. And, you know, with what we're looking at, with forestry, vegetation, storms, and, you know, we haven't seen a big storm come off the lake for quite a lot of years. But a big storm comes up to the lake, let me tell you, it's not going to be great. And no offense to all this, but, you know, I'm being honest. You know, I've seen damage on our land caused from storms back in the 50s and 60s and the hurricane, you know, remnants. So it's, you know, we need to be more, a little more proactive of how we're looking at. A zone is one thing, but how you manage to look after what you're trying to promote is all the other different story. That's, I guess, all I have to say. So I don't so long.
I'll just have a quick question.
Yes, you can ask the question, yes.
Appreciate what you said. Were you sticking in favor or are you opposed?
Well, I'm on a neutral.
Okay, that's what I got.
Okay, yes. Yeah.
Just wanted to make a cut some clarification on section 942. Usually, we're used to seeing minimum setbacks and things like that. This is the same about the minimum front yards, side yards and rear yards. And it didn't really make any sense to me. I wonder if one of the planners could explain that.
I'm hoping guards can.
Yeah, so this is, so I think we're talking about the same thing. It's just worded in a way that maybe you're not familiar with seeing it. But this is our standard, so what that means, the minimum front yard means that the dwelling would have to be at least three meters from the front property line.
Okay, so what is a setback?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, what we
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes?
My name is Fred Lee, 9604 North Port Road. It's a part of the Sherbrooke Lake group, Sherbrooke Forest Association. So what I'm hearing tonight is some people opposed to the bylaw. And they're doing what it seems to me are kind of process reasons, you know, they come to the process late. They're not comfortable with new bylaw applying for all around. Comfortably, both the other side is a different municipality and a different position. I guess, you know, on that score, this wouldn't be the first time Manchester has taken a different position on issues. I remember the debate about opening access to the lake for example. When we're Luenenberg, it's going one way and Chester another. Just what I'm out hearing is from people who are opposed to it, you know, what are the specific aspects of the new zone that they're objecting to? I did spend quite a bit of time looking at the proposed I did spend quite a bit of time looking at the proposed bylaw. And noticed that there's a lot of room even within terms of the bylaw for those who are affected by it. For people to do their own thing. And that has been mentioned that there are, there is. Restrictions, but who have already cleared some land in a way that would be against the bylaw, want to come into effect. Now they're not required to replant or anything else, we can maintain that, that area. One thing I would point out is that for someone who is concerned about that, it's a long journey from that concern to actually seeing in print. The grandfathering or grandmothering clause that would protect what we've done. It's not in the bylaw itself, they have to go for another piece of legislation which. And then they have to go to another piece of legislation before it's actually laid out. So if there were one thing that I would recommend. If people are concerned about that issue, it would be to make reference in the bylaw also about that provision is pretty clear.
Anyone who hasn't spoken already wish to speak? Yeah. Yeah. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, so we'll close the public, public session. So it's open to discussion by council.
Couple of questions I'm going to ask the board. Someone, Fred, Fred Lee? Good question. Some of the correspondence that we received in opposition. One that stood out to me was one from a tissue. I think they were opposed from what I'm seeing. They raised particular issues and they may, sure, help answer your question and help me a little bit. Or that's what, that's their letter probably in the package.
Yes.
Three points that they raised.
Number thirteen.
Okay, sir. It was proposed like a change of the period that we will no longer be allowed to maintain these areas. If they fall within the ten meters of high water mark, it would also lead us to believe that we cannot use this space for recreational use such as sitting by the lake in lawn chairs. Watching the kids enjoy the lake with people playing a friendly game of washers house. And then they go on to say, our family made the decision during, during development. It retrieved the name on much of our property, the new bylaw, if approved, would impair our ability to open our existing space further. We want to get your comment on that. The third thing they raised in the letter, our family cottage is a two bedroom cottage and our family is wrong to improve four households. Time to time, we may all come to the cottage at the same time and bring RVs to accommodate everyone. We will continue this tradition regardless of the bylaw. Those of our providing that, anyway.
I had a major question. Yeah. So, so the first one had to do with areas that were already cleared, presumably that wouldn't comply with the bylaw and whether those could be maintained. So yes, they can be maintained. That was, I'll try to explain it again in different words. Basically, what we would consider that is to be a non-conforming use of land. That, as, as Fred mentioned, you do have to, the bylaw references the municipal government act. So you do have to look to that legislative. They should define the wording, but a use of land taking place and the rules change, that use is no longer permitted. It becomes non-conforming. In this case, we would view the cleared area as the non-conforming use of land. And so that would be permitted to basically continue to be cleared. The only caveat to that, and this was something that came up during the municipal plan review, is the municipal government act says that if a non-conforming use ceases for six months. Then it cannot be recommenced. So that would, in theory, say that if you didn't cut it for six months, that you couldn't continue it. Council, when we went through the municipal plan review, extended that six month timeline for all uses, not specific to this cutting of vegetation to a year. So basically, if you have a cleared area and you cut it once a year, good go.
There's nothing that would prevent them from using this space for recreation.
Absolutely not. I don't know where, it would also lead, no, no, I'm just, you asked me to comment, I'm not sure where they feel. That it would also lead them to, I don't, I don't know what's coming from, there's nothing on, yeah, yeah.
And now you hit the third point, I think.
Next one was the family cottage, two bedroom and the RVs.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so yeah, so as, as I mentioned earlier, we are regulating RVs. They do require a development permit and the way that.
Only if they're there for over two weeks.
Right, that's right, thank you, yes. So there, there's that piece to it. And then the way that it's written here is if, if there is a dwelling on the lot, you're permitted to. And, and again, there's going to be a distinction here between an RV that gets a permit and an RV that comes in for less than fourteen days in a year. Because those are exempt from permit requirements. So if you have a dwelling on the lot, you're permitted to have one RV that can stay there all year and be used as a second dwelling unit. So the zone limits each lot to two dwelling units per lot. And essentially what we're doing is treating an RV like a dwelling in this zone. So if you have a dwelling unit, you could be then getting a development permit to have an RV on the lot. And that could be lived in all summer long or all year long. And that would be, you would be at capacity if there was no dwelling unit on the lot, no cottage. You could have two RVs and they could each get a development permit and they could be lived in all year long. If you had a dwelling unit and one RV, you were maxed out, you could still bring in additional RVs, but only for that fourteen day period. Because if they stayed beyond fourteen days, then they would require a permit and you wouldn't be able to issue a permit because you already have one RV at the block. So that, there is a bit of complexity, I guess, to that piece, so I understand. Yeah.
No, I just, I just want to further.
So, so a two bedroom cottage include four households. Bring RVs, so they don't state how many RVs. So a two bedroom cottage and one RV, they could get a permit for each of those to live in them all summer. And they could bring a second or even a third in. Be temporary basis.
Be temporary.
So for a weekend or a family reunion or something like that, absolutely, if it was to bring it in and stay there all summer. Don't be worried, right? Eric, yeah?
Okay, questions?
Yeah, certainly.
So I think we're going to have probably a hurry discussion, but this will actually allow me, Eric's question, to mention to staff a tremendous thank you. For walking, all of us, but I can speak for myself, walking me through this from the time that we arrived and landed at the new zone back in January with that approval. To the proceeding through the exercise of where we saw this coming from organically, from the citizens, our property owners. Is how we, how we kind of laid that out and that's happened. So I just want to thank staff tremendously. And that includes today with, including Pam, our municipal clerk, including for council's awareness and part of our deliberation, all of the public input. In terms of the one that I received this afternoon at two thirty, but that to Pam, Pam copies. So I think people, it's important for people to know that, that the people that did take the time to reach out. We did not necessarily just, you know, cut it off when we were going to. And that, there are deadlines for, for reasons that are very important. So I just think it's important to state that. I did actually think, and I, for my fellow counselors, and I have not had the conversation with you yet. I actually thought that I would hear from many more people. I thought that I would, I did not receive a phone call and my, both my home and cell numbers are well advertised in my. Publica, in the New Ross publication that I now don't do monthly, but I do every other month. But those numbers have not changed from the beginning of time. So I had not one phone call. I have made myself available at public events when I could. I think I attended the most recent forty's community center with councillor Vino. And I jokingly said to him that I'll defer all my questions that, but not one person. And I saw many New Rossers at that forty's community center dinner. So just again, I know there's some questions around how extensive this was, not being aware and so on. So I just wanted to state that. But also too, I, I only heard the one person who saw me getting gas in the community. And that was an individual that had a property not in the three hundred meters, but within the thirty meters of somebody that was going to be, I guess is how you word it. And I was actually surprised because I thought that he, who was probably in his thirties. Person that works road building and construction in another county neighboring on Loomer County, neighboring our municipal unit. And he's actually experiencing what's happening on different lakes in the valley. So he surprised me, but that's it for me, to let my fellow counselors know in terms of what I've heard. You've, you've got the package of information here. I just wanted to save that kind of comments before we get into some of the hurried deliberation. Thank you.
Anyone else comments?
Well, I don't have to tell you what comes next. But if there are no further comments, no further questions, then the council has to make a choice of whether or not we're going to approve it.
Actually, I'll comment.
Not approve it, there's no, no further comments for the public. Public session, sorry.
Sure, sure, yes, but I, so I just thought we might have a discussion, so I'm just going to maybe have some more comments.
Well, do you have more?
Because again, I just wanted the process itself, because it's very important. Yeah, yeah, so the process itself in terms of it being initiated by the property owners. It came to council, there was a public information meeting that, I don't have that in front of me, but I'm, I'm guessing it was advertised that there was going to be a public, is that correct? Yes, so the, the one, the end of March at the forty's community center. That was well attended, in my opinion, and I've already told you that because I was there myself in attendance. And there were a few people in the audience here tonight that were there, so I was thankful for that. We had, of course, through the process, the municipal area planning committee, of which there is a district six representative on that committee. I met with that person. Designed the lake zone to ensure that I was on the same page or knew what that person's thinking. The same with this tonight, I met with that individual, that citizen representative twice to talk about their thoughts were. And also others from New Ross who are here tonight as well through that process. And that meeting, as you said, Garth, it was June fifteenth, I was in attendance. At that meeting. And I know talking to Garth the day that we moved it through council, the Thursday before Canada Day. And I think Garth, that was the day he went to the area and put four signs in the ground to advertise that this was happening. So that would have been Thursday, June thirtieth, and today's August the fourth. Again, I just, I thought I'd hear from more people, I didn't. I'm very comfortable, I'm not at the vote just yet, but I'm, as one individual here at this table, I'm very. Comfortable with the process, with the, I heard from, we get that, we know that, that's, that's black and white, we know that. But I'm, I'm, that's my comments.
Does anyone else have any comments? I'm essentially looking for correction from council.
There's no comment, okay, I would, for the, the motion that we look to rezone. The area Sherbrooke Lake from general basis to Lakeside Zone.
Move that we rezone? Okay. That's the motion I require?
Yes.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried.
Okay, so just, I guess for information as to where we go from here. So we will run an advertisement in the progress bulletin to outline the right of appeal as there is with all new bylaw changes. And so there will be a fourteen day appeal period beginning on the day the ad appears. That will likely be not this coming Wednesday, but the following Wednesday. So there'll be a little bit of time before that appears, that'll be fourteen days from that date. And those appeals obviously would be submitted to the utility review board. If there's no appeals received by the end of the appeal period, then the zoning becomes effective. And if there is an appeal, then obviously that would get dealt with and that, I mean, that resolution is effective.
Okay, thank you. There's no further business, it's a single item agenda. Motion to adjourn, so. That's all, those in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Yeah, can, can I just ask, council itself?